Well, he didn't get in here in time to get introduced. These things have bad luck, alright? Council members, it's that time of the year again and we're nearing the, certainly, a great time of the season. And it's also a time for us to recognize that Small Business Saturday is coming upon us. And whereas the government of the city of Morristown celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, but according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States that represent ninety nine point seven percent of all businesses with employees in the United States who are responsible for sixty four point nine percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand eighteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector of this country. And whereas ninety four percent of consumers in the U.S. value the contributions that small businesses make in their community. And whereas ninety six percent of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said today inspires them to go to small independently owned retailers and restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas fifty nine percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. Whereas the city of Morristown supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I'm Mayor D.R. Chesney. On behalf of the City Council of the city of Morristown, do hereby proclaim November thirtieth, twenty nineteen, as Small Business Saturday. And we urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you for your kind attention. Uh, now, uh, on the agenda, we come to the first of two sessions where citizen comments on the floor are welcome. This first is about comments about agenda items only, items which are on the agenda. This is, for those attending first time, this is not a question-answer session. This is just for you to express your comments. You have three minutes to do that. You will need to introduce yourself by name and address when you come. Because these are about agenda items, you speak about only what is on that agenda. And for example, let's take nine C five, for example. That is a contract only. And any discussions or comments about the project pertain to that contract. If you wish to have comments about the project that's connected to that contract, then that comes in the comments in section eleven. So, uh, let's make that distinction and I'll help you along if you forget. So, floor is now open. Anybody wants to address agenda items, uh, the floor is now open.
My name is Gwendolyn Holden. I live at twenty-three forty-three Substate Springs Road. I'm, uh, on your agenda, in the agenda meeting in the little room, Mr. Cox said that the joint economic board agreement on your agenda is to clarify the membership of the board. Mr. Cox didn't tell you that Marshall Ramsey and Jack Fishman had been serving illegally on that board and voting on that board for seven to eight years? That's why this agreement is on the agenda for today.
Thank you, Gwen. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Okay. We'll re-.
I'd like to address item nine C five, which is a contract for geotechnical services at the opposed side of the community center on the west end of Hamlin County. Before I do that, however, I'd like to pass out two sections of state law. This was mentioned in an email which I sent to you.
Does this pertain to the contract?
I think it does, yes.
Does it?
I think it does.
Hang on there. Okay, I, I think if it's not, and why don't you bring this up in section eleven, okay?
This, uh, what I'm asking you to do is not, not vote for the con- listen to me.
Is there anything about the contract that you wish to discuss?
Listen to me.
Go ahead.
I'm asking that you remove or table your vote on the contract until such time as you hopefully take action to allow the people to vote on the bond issue that you're planning on for the Rich and Green Boulevard Community Center. What I pass out tells you, you can have a referendum. You can let the people vote. You can trust the people and let them vote on this. What I sent to you is nine twenty-one two oh eight. It's even entitled "Will of the People," and says that the governing body can hold an election to ascertain the will of the electorate.
Are you asking us to, uh, on the table, the contract?
I'm asking to table the contract.
Okay, thank you.
And amend your agenda to add a, an election resolution. Let the people vote. And you all know you can do it. Do you trust the people?
Thank you, Lander. Anyone else wish to be heard on that time? Okay. Now we'll close the floor to that portion. Jump up a little quicker, don't you?
Yeah. Yeah. In the term one.
Yeah.
I'm Judy Stockard. I live at seven eighty-eight Central Church Road. Only thing I've got to say is I was really surprised when you started this. It was vacation time. Everybody was on vacation. Nobody got notified or anything.
Judy.
Wait a minute, Gary.
Judy.
Uh, let me talk. I am a citizen of Hamlin County and I have something to say and I would appreciate it if you would let me say it.
Alright, and you can let me say something here. We're gonna be happy to hear from you that this is not the proper time on our agenda and our agenda is what we're gonna follow, so your time will come, okay?
Only thing I want to say is, you need to let the people vote. I cannot believe that the people did not get an opportunity to vote on this. After twenty-six years, Kay, after twenty-six years being here, we trusted you. We thought that you would always go to the people.
This is not.
You know, let the people vote. Mr. Pettigo, let them vote.
I think they.
Mr. Garrett, let them vote. All of you, let them vote.
Alright. We'll close this portion of the meeting. We don't, we're gonna move on to the next one. We'll have time to hear everybody who wants to be heard. We'll move on to item nine C, which is kind of the awarding of bids and contracts. It's the approval and the amendment to the agreement creating the Joint Economic and Community Development Board in Hamlin County.
This is an interlocal agreement that establishes the board to reference. The amendment to the agreement has been passed by the county commission. It comes due with a recommendation from, from staff approval.
We have a motion to that recommendation.
Some of it.
Motion Pettigo, is there a second? And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's go. And that motion carries. Next is the approval to apply for the Tennessee Department of Transportation nineteen twenty Traffic Signal Modernization Grant.
The Tennessee Department of Transportation is trying a new program for grants that will allow for upgrading of traffic signals across the state. One of the things they're trying to do is to get a feel for how much heat there is across the state, so they're asking communities to make grant applications for projects that can be accomplished relatively quickly within a certain budget amount. We are prepared to make application. Matter of fact, we are prepared to make several applications with only one being granted. At this point in time, the rules of the grant would be for a one-hundred percent funded from T.D.O. If we're successful in getting the grant award, we'll bring back a contract to your consideration.
Is there a motion to that recommendation?
May for approval.
Motion setter, do we have a second? We have a second. Any questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection service between the city of Morristown and the Morristown Utilities Commission.
The council has been discussing since budget presentation in May about the potential for adding a new water line downtown that would allow for a fire flow protection to the rear of the buildings. That's the, that would be a grant-funded project that's a community development block grant program. The agreement before you today is an agreement that will allow M.U.S. to manage the program, to, to take care of the engineering and the bidding of the project as well as construction. It lays out the rules for how the grant funds must be handled. If we're, get the, the agreement approved, we'll move forward into design and bidding phases and come back to council with a, a design and a cost estimate. M.U.S. has already approved the agreement, is it recommended approval?
We have a motion to that recommendation. Motion Aghorn, we have a second. We have a second. Any questions or comments?
When would that work begin?
At this point in time, the, the first piece will be selecting an engineer to do design. It may go to bid, so it would not be until spring at the earliest before we could consider active construction. And as indicated, we'll come back with a workshop on, on terms of costs and how it can be laid out.
So, projected maybe completely here?
Yeah, completely here would be an optimistic answer.
Are there any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of change order number one with design innovation architects. This is for the Morristown City Hall Plaza Garage. This increases the contract amount of six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and two cents.
As you're aware, we've been doing a project here to, to manage our rainwater and our plaza and garage area for some time. We've seen a lot of progress. There've been some changes as we've gone through and found things, some modifications of design, a bit of pluses and some minuses. The net result of this first change order as you indicated is a little more than sixty-five hundred dollars. Project's going well, we are on, on, on task. Rick is here from D.I.A. If you have any questions, would we recommend approval?
Do we have a motion?
May for approval.
Motion setter. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the acceptance of the proposed geotechnical and environmental services with the community center signed to the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Approval of the contract and to allow Tony Cox, our city administrator, to enter into an agreement with Geo Services LLC.
The contract before you is the next step in construction of the community center. Geo, Geo's will look at a report about the site, look at things like the area for the swimming pool, make sure there's not rock there, to talk about soils, man, how we manage the foundation, to give the design team some additional data necessary to, to move forward with the design they're already working on. This does not increase the total project budget of thirty-six million dollars. Geo's has worked with us in the past and given very good service, we'd recommend approval.
Is there a motion to this recommendation?
Something.
Motion Pettigo, is there a second? And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And a motion carries. Next is the approval to purchase eleven vehicles for the police department through the statewide contract for a total amount of four hundred thousand eighty-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
This is part of our annual purchase of fleet vehicles for the police department. It's not been a particularly good year for the police department. We've had several accidents that removed vehicles from our fleet. This proposal would increase the planned purchase from ten to eleven. That will increase the cost beyond budget by eleven thousand dollars. Looking at the, the police department budget, we feel we can easily identify those savings and based on that, we recommend to purchase these eleven vehicles from state contract.
Do we have a motion to this recommendation?
Some of it.
Motion bidbers, we have a second. Need a second. Got a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of change order number one with Andrews and Hoskins Construction for Heritage Park. This decreases the contract, contract amount of forty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
This will be a final closeout change order for the Andrews construction of this park, phase one construction. The most significant change in the scope of work being done by Andrews is we eliminated the paving part of the scope of the work that allows for the reduction in total amount of, we'd recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? Motion setter. Need a second. Got a second. Questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the acceptance of a recommendation from D.I.A. to award the bid for the roof replacement for fire stations number two, number five, and number six in the city center to Morristown Roofing Incorporated in an amount of five hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars.
As council's aware, roof repairs on all these structures is part of your approved budget. We have gone and taken bids, D.I.A., just taken bids for these, these projects, it's three fire stations and the city center. The total budget is slightly above, the bids are slightly above budget when you've taken into consideration the construction costs and contract management. We think there, we do have good bids. We think we can find savings to cover the additional costs. Again, Rick is here from D.I.A. if you have any questions.
Is there a motion to this recommendation?
May for approval.
Motion setter. We need a second. Got a second. Any questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. And finally, we have the approval of the inspection and maintenance agreement between the city of Morristown and O and A Properties, which is Fazoli's of Morristown.
As council's aware and the audience may, may come to learn, we have an agreement with each development to, to maintain and set out responsibilities for the stormwater management of the facilities. That's the intent of, the purpose of this agreement. This is for Fazoli's, as you indicated, we would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to that recommendation? So, we have a motion Aghorn. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. Vote, I'm sorry. And that motion carries. Next on, we come to the appointments portion. We have a council appointment or reappointment to the childcare centers board, which is a Morristown handling operation. This is for a two-year term, expires November twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Currently, our police deputy chief, Michelle Jones serves. I understand that she's willing to return to that role if we have a nomination from the floor, from the council.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we, um, appoint deputy chief, Michelle Jones.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint deputy chief Jones. We have a second. Hold on, yes, we need a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none, let's vote. And deputy chief Jones goes back on. We appreciate her willingness to serve in that. Under new issues, we have the approval of the, the force of the sale of property to Tennessee Mechanical and Industrial in the Morristown Airport Industrial District, which consists of approximately three acres of lot thirteen D Ontario Circle. The purchase price, seventeen thousand dollars.
As you indicated, this is a proposal to sell a lot in the west end industrial park. It is a relatively small lot, one of the few lots that we have remaining for, for development in that park. It does come to use as a recommendation from industrial development board. Tennessee Mechanical already does a great deal of work for our existing industry. It'll be a welcome addition to our industrial community, we'd recommend approval.
Is there a motion to that recommendation?
May for approval.
Motion setter. And we have a second. Any questions or comments on this one?
Tony, that's probably the best use that could be had on that, that figure.
This is a unique configuration of property and I think it will be a good use. And you, you're right, there's not a lot of other uses that would fit that.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next, we have two promotions at the Morristown Fire Department. Chief Honeycutt, are you prepared on those?
Yes, Mayor, I am prepared. Just a quick explanation, the vacancy at the position of lieutenant exists due to a recent retirement of twenty-six-year veteran Gina Barrett. So, with the action denied, our request would be that mayor and council would take the necessary procedure to fill that vacancy. Again, it's at the position of lieutenant. Within your packet, you should have a certified roster for the lieutenant position and you may consider the top three names. And I'm prepared to make recommendations should you so ask.
Who is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be Mark Brewer.
Mark Brewer. Chief Honeycutt has recommended Mark Brewer. Is there a motion to accept that recommendation? So, motion bidbers, we have a second. Second, Aghorn. Are we voicing or not? That recommendation of Mark Brewer is accepted.
Okay, Mayor, based on that action, Mr. Brewer filled the position of driver, so now he's promoted to lieutenant. We have a vacancy at the driver position. Once again, you have the roster within your packet and you may consider the top three names. And once again, I'm prepared to give recommendations.
Who is your recommendation?
I would recommend John Heather.
John Heather lives, recommendation, we have a motion to accept Chief Honeycutt's recommendation. Motion Aghorn. And we have a second. Any questions for the chief? Let's vote. And the, John Heatherly moves into that motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
Next is the, uh, we have an item on here for consideration of our Christmas holiday schedule, Christmas being on a Wednesday, that'll be a day off. Is there a, a recommendation or consideration that we would propose?
Yes, Mayor, I think we need to give the employees additional holiday day of Christmas Eve, which will be on a Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
To go along with Christmas, okay? Is there a motion to that? You put that before the motion. And if we have a second. We do have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion is approved. We come to the city administrator's report, Tony, it's you.
First, on behalf of the employees, I'd like to thank you for that consideration and we'll move forward with the planning schedules to make sure we can still cover necessary services during that period of time. Couple of things to bring to your attention. First, if you've looked in the, in the news lately, you'll note that our local economy continues to grow. We've had recent announcements, announcements of investment and expansion in Iconix and H. Local industry continues to do very well in our community and is the backbone of what we're able to do in the city of Morristown. I'd also want to offer my personal thanks to Randy and Ginny Boyd and the Boyd Foundation. They have made possible a dog park dash grant that allowed us to construct a, a, a second dog park for our community at Wayne Hanser Park. We were able to dedicate that yesterday. It was very well received, very well attended, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to our community. And then finally, as we move forward to the date of November sixteenth, I want to make sure everyone comes out to Heritage Park for the celebration of our new facility with the community. And that's my report for that.
Thank you, Tony. We come to the portion of the meeting where we have comments and communications from anybody from the floor who wishes to address any topic that you believe the city needs to hear. Again, if you'll introduce yourselves by name and address, you will have three minutes. Again, not a question-answer session, however, the council or mayor can make comments in the next section after all the comments are through. At this time, the floor is now open and I won't be closing the floor until I'm sure everybody, you won't have to jump up and erase the microphone before I bang the gavel. So, the floor is now open. Judy, are you coming since you're closest?
I'm coming up there.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to.
Hello. Good evening. Uh, my name is Sean Kennyam. I live at five thirteen East Sports Street. I grew up in Morristown, right away from East High, nineteen eighty. I know several of the members on this board, some for many years. I come about the city community center. I'm disappointed that I'm coming here tonight. I'll give you credit, Mr. Mayor. You said you were a progressive when you ran and you've been taxed and spent this city big time. Yes.
Yeah.
All I know since you've been in office is that our taxes went up, my service costs have went up. And yet, our roads in this city are in disrepair in many areas. We have a project over here, the Heritage Park. I understand the vision. I appreciate the vision. But we've had three, four plans on that and the cost keeps going up on that every time we have a new plan. It isn't completed to the original plan. Don't seem to have sufficient parking around there. I live very close by, right at the road. Matter of fact, I bought my house from Ken Smith. It's disappointing. We have a lot of, we have nice parks in this city already that are not fully occupied. I don't know if the intent is for Morristown to become the dis golf capital of the United States. I don't know what the objective is really, honestly speaking. But now, we want to do this city community center. And quite frankly, the location of it bothers me. It's on the very west side of the city limits, the Rannix, because of Merchant's Green Road. It seems to serve the West Hamlin County residents, no offense to the West Hamlin County residents. But what about the people in the middle of the city? What about the people on the east side of the city? What about the people on the east side of the county? Should be more centrally located, first of all. Second of all, when we're sitting here repairing this building we're standing in now, that's not that very old with millions of dollars that weren't planned, now we're gonna spend thirty-seven million, thirty-six million, and that wasn't the original plan. So, I'm quite disappointed that this is what the city wants to do, make a loan. I think at a fair minimum, at a fair minimum, that this city council should allow the voters to vote on this movement of the city council.
Thank you, Johnny.
That is a respectful thing to do for the city residents of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Who's next?
Hello.
Hi, Judy.
Are you good enough?
I can, I don't let the others stand by.
Okay, how did you? How about you? No, okay. I just want to be close enough. My name is Judy Greggert. You all recognize me 'cause I'm here often. Usually, my main purpose is to remind you that we are waiting for the buses. Now, I am not complaining, but when I moved here, Morristown- Now, I am not complaining, but when I moved here, Morristown was, and still is considered the largest rural city or rural place in Tennessee without public transportation, which is my big issue. And accessibility, of course, is another one. But I understand it's coming and I really, it's very difficult to get through the week without transportation. Just sit and think, what do you do if you don't have a car or transportation? Many of us don't have something to rely on and we're sure waiting for that bus. And I do have a lot of these T-shirts made that said, "Morristown needs the buses now." Unfortunately, a lot of those people can't get out to the meeting, but they do have the shirts and you'll see them around town. I just want to remind you, I do know that the buses are coming. I'm thankful for that, very thankful for that, and for my many neighbors. And I'm sure there's many people that would like to have reliable transportation to work so that they can hold down a job better because of transportation. So, thank you for what you have done, but we're, you'll see me at least and tell them the buses are on the street because we'll be back to remind you. And my other thing I've always mentioned is the screen. I think you get a lot of response by people seeing what's going on in Morristown more than reading it out of the newspaper, catching it once in a while from a neighbor's newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Judy, we're hurrying up every change we get on those buses. I think we're looking at December. Who's next?
It's Tony.
No, she's next because she got cut off once.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Michelle Long. I live at five four three West Sunset Hills Drive. I'm asking you guys to table the initiative for the thirty-seven million dollars until you can bring it in front of my peers and let us vote on that. My reasoning for that is, I'm not against the city center for the children. We just simply have too many vacant buildings. I myself am a single-income person. There is no assistance for me. If you guys force this on us in the city with the new jail, big chances are I would have to sell my home. I simply cannot afford any more increases in my taxes. I'm not against the new jail. I just think we can do better with construction and cost. I support our sheriff, I support you guys, I hope you guys in. But I think you're doing your constituents a misjustice by not allowing them to have a voice. Neither of you guys sitting up here would like it if I came into your business and told you how to spend your money on your business. You wouldn't like that. And your people doesn't like that. You have these meetings at five P.M. All my friends are working, working people who can't afford to be here. If they miss one day's work, that's a difference between a day, between a meal and their electric bill. I pay all my bills myself, I get no help, no assistance. I'm a retired truck driver, I've worked very, very hard for what I legitimately outgot own. And if I'm struggling to pay the taxes, I don't know how I would afford to live paying a monthly rent. So, all of this at one time is too much for your people. It's just too much. It's just too much, guys. And we're asking you to consider that. At least allow us to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Who's next?
My name is Greg Skinner. I live in the Wall Street apartment, same complex as Judy Greggert at five seven eight Holley Street. Just supporting what you said about the bus. I happened to see a preliminary map of what the roads were and I noticed it had two stops at the food city of Massingill Springs and the one out by Irvine. I asked if they amended and include one out to the store by Jalen Road. We have two employees there. One of them has epilepsy, the other one just lost her brother. No way getting to work and they need to get there. Then I myself might even ride the bus occasionally. Just possibly add a little extra on the route. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
My name is Ed Berg. I live at nine two four Saddle Ridge Lane. I've been to Morristown since nineteen seventy-one.
I'm sorry, the, your address was what?
Nine two four Saddle Ridge Lane. First time I've ever attended a city councilman and I appreciate you, Mayor, and all of you councilmen. I'm a disabled Vietnam veteran, disabled due to Agent Orange exposure. My objection is to the city civic center, or whatever you call it, down on the west end of town. We do not need that facility. If cities that I've lived in, if they can't support it, once they hit it in, it costs too much money. With the jail, that is a heavy enough hit to expect us city and county residents to pay for. And then add this city, whatever you call it, down on the east end or west end of town, which is nothing but sinkhole city anyway. I ask that y'all would just table it and put this off in the future or put it on the ballot and let us vote for it.
Thank you, Ed. Who's next?
Paulie Matron, two zero seven four North Economy, Morristown, Tennessee. I wanted to speak about the community center and ask you all to please, for the benefit of all of the people whose voices have not yet been heard, to put this question on a ballot. I would be willing, as a taxpayer, to pay for the somewhat limited cost of a special election or a referendum, whatever is required. I know several of you have said that you've taken surveys and people in the surveys have said that they want the community center. And yes, that's true, the few people who responded to those surveys. Every year, so I'm sure you know, and many out here in the audience do, the International City Managers Association does a survey of several municipalities around the country. The survey that they send out is just a random sample. We have thirty thousand people in this city. The random sample is sent to a little over a thousand. Last year, about four hundred-plus people responded. The year before, it was a little over two hundred. That is not sufficient to give you the voices of the people who really matter and vote in this town. It's not too late to create a referendum for this issue. The state law allows it.
Yes.
And I stand here respectfully and ask you to please reconsider this, especially in light of the bond that's going to be required to build a new jail. As the previous speaker said, this is, it's like a double land for a lot of people. Sixteen percent of our residents are over age sixty-five. And I'm sure a lot of them are living on fixed incomes. This is going to create a lot of problems, I think, down the road. And I think you really need to reconsider this. And I just ask that you create a referendum and let the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulie.
My name is Linda Nolly. I live at twenty-three forty-three Judge Stevens Road. I live and pay property taxes in the county, but I also own property in the city and pay city taxes and vote in city elections. Regarding the community center, you have before you state law that lets you offer a referendum. Do it, let the people vote. Please call for a city referendum. Let the people vote. We've had sales tax referendum, a sales tax referendum, a liquor by the drink referendum, a wheel tax referendum. Let the people vote on this issue.
Absolutely.
And the county needs to do the same thing. It's not, as Mr. Cunningham, was that your name correct?
Yes.
It's not as Mr. Cunningham said that anyone is necessarily against a community center. But perhaps this isn't the time or the place or the price.
Right.
I live on the west end. But that's not fair to put it down there. And it is a sinkhole haven, as every one of you know. You've already experienced that. Let the people, letting the people vote on the bond issue should be an easy call for people who, officials who trust the people and serve the people. If the people vote for it, proceed on. But let them vote. And if they oppose it, then go back, either redesign or relocate or simply wait for the right time. Mr. Petticoat, let the people vote. Mr. Garrett, let the people vote. And I know you and Mr. Bivens.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We asked for a referendum. Don't excuse me, he and I asked for a referendum and this county, this commission turned it down. Watch who you point to.
Just a minute, was there a vote on that? Did you make a motion?
Hell, what difference makes if I made a statement, that's all it matters.
That didn't do anything.
No need to cut.
I appreciate your statement, I appreciate Mr. Bivens' statement.
You know that there were two votes for it and the rest of it against it, that's what you know.
You have thirty seconds.
What I know is you didn't make a motion. Mr. Ahern, Ahern, let the people vote. Mr. Chesney, let the people vote. Ms. Center, let the people vote. Mr. Bivens, let the people vote, make that motion. Let these, let these other, if you are for it, just make the motion and let these others vote against it. So the people will know. So the people will know who is for letting the people vote and who's against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes, sir, my name is Russell King. I live at eleven eighty-four Cordell Hall Drive, Morristown, Tennessee. And I'm here to speak on the city center. Part of it I blame on myself. I took it for granted, as far as I know, you're all Republicans up here. In the past, I can trust you guys. And I'm just letting you all on notice, this time was my fault. Ain't gonna be a next time. I'm watching now. And you better wake up because I think there's a lot of people that would be here, but you have this at five o'clock. And that'd be my main suggestion, have it on a Saturday and see how many people be here. You know, I worked very hard, twenty-three years in the army, retired. I picked Morristown because of the taxes. There's no way in hell that I'd have picked here if I didn't knew I moved here in two thousand thirteen. You guys would double it all the time. I came from South Carolina. The state did something because a lot of counties are doing what you guys are doing. Thinking, you know, everybody's house is your piggyback. So they put referendum and they could only raise taxes every five years. Right now, I wish I was back in South Carolina. Put it to a quote, I don't know what you guys are afraid of, but I can tell just being here this first meeting, I went to the county because they wanted thirty-four cents, you guys already got a quarter. My first recommendation, stop saying twenty-five cents, say two hundred fifty dollars on every hundred thousand of your house. Then that's real money. I know why you say a quarter.
Amen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, come on.
My name is Gordon Brand. I live at twenty-one ten Highview Drive, Morristown, Tennessee.
I'm sorry, the address.
Twenty-one ten Highview.
Highview.
All of work. You know, I know Kay, I've known Kay for a long time. She knew me when I worked over at TCAT Morristown. And April the second, twenty eighteen, they gave me four months to live. So I had to have a liver transplant. So I got the liver transplant and November twenty-ninth, I fell from a tree thirty feet. And I spent twenty-two more days in the hospital. I crushed my ankles, broke my leg in six places, my back, eight ribs and my sternum. I have no money to give for extra taxes. And I'm sure there's a lot of people in here that might be in the same boat that I'm in. But I owe so much now and I'm not the type of person who's going to run out here and file bankruptcy. So, I've got to scratch and do everything I can just in order to pay these medical bills that I've got. I can't afford more stuff when it's not really improving anything. We've not had our road paved in fourteen years that I've been living there. So, tell me where my taxes is going because it sure ain't touched our road and it's full of potholes. So, you know, I've talked to Kay a lot of times, she was a good friend. I've known her for a long time. I know that me and her probably don't see eye to eye on everything when it comes to, to, you know, for being a politician, but I know she understands people and not everybody here should understand that a lot of these people that weren't going to be getting taxed, they can't afford it.
Thank you, Gordon. Okay, come on.
My name is Cindy Mo, and I live at one ninety. Thank you. I live at one ninety-three Embassy Drive in Morristown, New City. I agree with most of what's being said tonight that a vote should be put in place. And I think the main reason why is the amount of funds that are going to be spent and what is being spent on in comparison to some of the other needs in the city. We know we need the jail, we know the expense there. There's things we cannot do without. This city's growing leaps and bounds, but we're still primarily doing the car. I don't think, and if you look also, I'd like to plead with your plans. If this does proceed and a vote isn't put in place, because I think if a vote was, you would find it difficult to the city. But if it does, I would plead that you would look at the footprint plan of the facility you're going to build because what I'm seeing is a lot of the buildings that are planned are including gyms. And as little as seven, ten years ago, there were no facilities in cities that offered affordable workout plans. We have three that popped up in the past seven years. One in each location, west, east and central, which services people, offers jobs. We, a community center could be competing with that, but it doesn't even make sense because in Newport, you pay two dollars per visit to their gym part. It's not a free service. And most people that work out, work out two to three days a week. So if you add that money, you're not only competing with businesses that are here that are thriving and doing well, which may also invite more, but you're not even competitive to what they offer because a lot of those gym memberships are ten and fifteen dollars a month. So if you could look at your plan, look at the future and how you see that you may be competing in ways and offering services that are obsolete or could be in the very near future and omit some of that expense, you might save millions right there alone because I'm sure that's a very big expense. Also, we have some services. Also, we have some services to the community that are doing really well. The Boys and Girls Club, we have a public library that could use some vamping. It needs additional parking, that I know has been approved. Lots of things. So the allocation of funds, I don't think is good. I don't approve the location. I do think it needs to be voted, and that would give you an opportunity to rethink where the money's going and how you could plan for a future facility and the design of it.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
She jumped up first. Let her come on. She got farther along than you got.
Thank you, Nina. My name is Melissa Finley. I live at 115 Ellen Drive here in Moorestown.
Ellen.
Ellen. And I want to thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm in agreement with the majority of people here. I believe that this thirty-seven million dollars that we're going to spend as a city is combined with citizens' money. And we need to have a vote for that. If democracy rules that we do that, then that's fine, that people have spoken. And the twenty-five cents per hundred for property owners who own a home doesn't speak volumes as to what the money that we have had to spend to small business owners. We've had to spend thousands extra in our taxes, city taxes, this year. And we don't have a money trade growing outside. So when we have to spend more money, we have to turn around and put that burden back on our tenants. Or if you're Walmart, you have to put that burden back on ten cents a can for vegetable goods. There's no money trees that grow. And that's, that's my view on this. I have another subject that I would like to bring to your attention. We own Cresswell Mobile Home Park. We're commercial property. And when we go to the city dump, because the city will not pick up any of our used carpets or old furnitures or whatever, we take it to the city dump and we pay a fee. We're commercial. We have many tenants in Cresswell who own their home. They also pay property tax on their home. But when they go to dump something, they're also charged a fee. I would like for you to look into this, because it isn't fair. If they own a house in the city property, they do not have to pay a dumping fee. But because they own a mobile home, and it sits on commercial property, they have to pay a dumping fee. So I wish that you would look at that. I tried to contact Mr. Hearn, and he didn't get back to me on two occasions concerning this issue. I'm in your board. And I just hope that you will consider what I think to say.
Melissa, leave your phone number there with Cindy. I think if you need clarification on who pays fees and the question about that, I think there might be some clarification in line, of course. Some of the right person needs to get in touch with you.
I've tried to talk to my county and my city, and...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
My name's Scott Cutshaw. I live at 1336 Brookfield Drive, Moorestown, Tennessee. You know, March the 3rd, we have a presidential primary. Four months is not going to make a big difference in the whole spectrum of things in putting a thirty-year burden on this city. In four months, you can put that on the ballot for people to vote for this twenty-five cents. The ballot's done written anyway. And it wouldn't take anything away from anybody. If you look at this and use a little bit of common sense, in the past two years, the city's raised tax fourteen cents, the county eight cents. You all are wanting to do twenty-five cents. The county's looking for thirty-four cents. That's eighty-one cent property tax increase in two years. Now, the middle class will fuss and complain, and we'll, we'll make our little comments and everything, but we'll pay it. But you take these retired people, and you take these factories. I don't know if you all were here back in the nineties whenever we had Exodus of all the woodworking factories. But that could sure happen again. Eighty-one cents. Our taxes go up a couple of hundred bucks. Theirs will go up thousands. You take a few of these factories out of here, and we start losing jobs. You remember, we had to raise taxes in the nineties just to pay the bills. Now, we're overlooking the big thing. It's our money that you're spending. If the people want to spend it, we're a democracy. We're a republic democracy. But for five people to sit up here and tell me I'm going to be on the hook for thirty years, that's longer than basically any of us sitting here is going to live. So our kids and grandkids are going to be a foot in the bill for a decision that we could wait four months and put on a ballot. I'm not coming up here just to say, hey, we don't need a city center. That's up to the people on the city center. Everybody's saying we need to put it to a vote. I'm telling you, when you can put it to a vote, March 3rd, whenever you go in and you vote for your president, nominee, you can vote, do I want to pay thirty-six million dollars for a city center, or do I not want to pay for it? You let some of this industry run out of here, what kind of shape are we going to be in?
Same. Wrong.
And you're hurting the old people. And I'm getting there myself, and I don't want to be in that boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Thank you for the privilege of speaking today. Teresa Long. I live at 111 Carmichael Street, right down the road here. And I'm with the rest of the group here. I feel like it needs to be put to a vote on the city center. Like they say, you're talking thirty-six million dollars. I've lived here. I was a nineteen-eighty graduate at West High School. We done just fine. I've raised two children. I have five, soon to be six grandchildren. And we done just fine without a thirty-six million dollar city center. There are, like they said, there's exercise places around here for kids to do. Most of them probably wouldn't even go to a city center. They're so busy on their tablets and their laptops and their cell phones. And, but it needs to be put to a vote. You're taxing us to death. I mean, my husband's worked for the, he used to be Angler Brush. He's been there for thirty-four years. And we own our property. We pay our taxes. And like they say, I think we need to put it to a vote. It shouldn't be left up just to a few to say, okay, we're going to pay thirty-six million dollars for a city center, or a community center. The people need to have their say-so. This is our democracy. Just like the road, like somebody mentioned earlier, some of the roads in Moorestown are awful. They're awful. You just built a new sidewalk down here for bikes. And half the time you go through there, that sidewalk, there's a tire business down there. You couldn't get through there on a bicycle, because they got their cars parked there changing tires. And it's sad. And, but I think it needs to be put to a vote. It's our money, and we need to have to say-so.
Thank you, Teresa. Someone else was coming.
My name's David Marshall. I live at 519 Windridge Lane in Moorestown. And with everybody else, I think you need to put this to a vote. Before you start spending that kind of money for a community center, give us some input. We don't really want to spend that money, at least not without having that input. Simply put, let us vote. That's all I got.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? I'm going to close the floor and give an ample time for his to bop over. Judy, you've already done that. Anyone else?
No, you have not. Not this time.
Not this time.
Okay, you're right. You've got another three minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
David, you dropped into this topic in your first three minutes, and I didn't get all the...
Yeah, I'd like to tell a little story, okay?
Let's hear it.
Okey-dokey. I'm with Gordon over here. He's been, had all kinds of hospitalization. Chris, thank you for talking to me on the phone. I appreciate it. I want you to know that I do.
Were you talking on the phone too?
I was getting ready to say that. I was getting ready to say that, and you beat me to the draw.
I just want to sit back and listen.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate it. Yes, thank you for taking my phone call, for calling me back and let us talk, because I did enjoy the conversation, even though I didn't like what you said. But that's okay, because I'm a big girl, and I put on my big-girl panties and paint it. But now, I want to tell you my story. My husband was in the hospital eight times last year, okay? I know where you're coming from. We did it to save his life. We spent a small fortune, small fortune, since 2013, to save his life, because he had prostate cancer that was very, very bad. He had to have a robotic prostatelectomy. That triggered other things that happened to him with his heart. Had to go have surgery on his heart because of A-Fil. Broke his neck, fell and broke his neck. I can keep going on and on and on. Do y'all think I got any money? I don't. And when my taxes come around, I don't know where the money's coming from. I don't know where it's coming from. I'm asking you to let the people vote. Make the decision and let them vote. I've got a brother out here, let's talk commercial right now, in a multi-million-dollar building. What are you all going to do with him? He's eighty-one-year-old. Are you going to destroy his life by taking all of these thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars from him? And he's in this, the business is in the city. It's one of the top businesses in Hamilton County. They bring in more people to this area than just about anybody. And you know it, Gary. And I'm telling you, the money that you all have proposed for this thing is absolutely ridiculous. You need to forget about it. You need to make a motion. You need to vote on it. And you need to let the people vote. Thank you.
Okay, we're closing this portion of the meeting. It is an opportunity now for, thank you for your comments, an opportunity for comments from council members or mayor, if council members wish to be heard.
Somebody better say something.
Let me just say, we appreciate your comments, and I know we usually don't have a big turnout for council meetings, and we understand that all of our decisions, it's not unanimous, but some decisions will make you like some, you know. But we have, we've researched this quite extensively. I guess my first reaction is, where are you being? And had countless opportunities for folks, and had countless opportunities for folks to speak. But we have balanced, we've balanced the cost with the rewards and the projections on this. We have a projection of three thousand new jobs coming here in the next five years. And this council believes that our city deserves this improvement, the residents deserve it, and it'll benefit the residents for both today and for tomorrow. Are there any other council members that wish to be heard on this topic? We have before us, if there are no other items, we find counsel that we will take about a two-minute break, and we will reconvene in work session. If there are no other items to come before the council, if they take a motion, we'll adjourn. We adjourn.